This meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven o'clock. For the audience tonight, I am the president and serve as the presiding officer for tonight's meeting. Before we move forward, I would like to announce that in response to executive orders issued by Governor Newsom, the city is conducting a teleconference public meeting utilizing Zoom video communications. This allows the city to continue to conduct essential business and comply with Public Health Administration recommendations to protect the public and city employees practice social distancing and limit exposure by not allowing in-person public meeting. To ensure that the public will be able to participate, public comments can be submitted as live comments during the Zoom meeting and via email at publiccomments@cityofglendora.org. Adam Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Thank you, President Blum. At this time, I would like to conduct an oral roll call and request that each trustee respond with present when their name is called. Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Merkley?
Present.
Trustee Toland? I'm gonna try to unmute Trustee Toland.
Present.
There we go. Thank you so much. And President, or sorry, Vice President Gutierrez?
Present.
Thank you. And President Blum?
Present.
All trustees are present. Thank you.
That brings us to the pledge of allegiance. Trustee Gutierrez, Roger, would you do, would you lead us, please?
Yes. Thank you. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Roger. That brings us then to reordering of an addition to the agenda. Does anyone wish to reorder or add to tonight's agenda? There are no one. That brings us then to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Library Trustees on items listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once on both on and off agenda items. This is your time to speak uninterrupted. Please address your comments to me, the presiding officer. Public comments is limited to thirty minutes. If you would like to request to speak, select the raise hand icon in Zoom before the close of the public comment period. You will then be called on when your turn is up to speak. Have any public comments been received?
At this time, President Blum, we have received no requests via the public comment email or requests through the Zoom meeting to give public comment.
Thank you very much. That, then I will close the public comment period at this time. That brings us then to board statements, reports. Do any trustees have any reports or announcements? There are no one. That brings us then to director report, statements, a report of library director and library divisions, Director Stone.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back with you again. I have very few updates to the written report that is part of the packet in, and I will just call out a few things. First of all, just to acknowledge that we had a strategic plan review workshop earlier this month, and we will be creating a report to bring back to you at a future meeting regarding what unfolded at that strategic plan review workshop. Thank you for your participation in that. Second of all, we, I just wanted to confirm for everyone that the library has been open in one respect or another the entire COVID time, but we are, have been adding main floor hours to the services that we have had all these months. Our main floor is now open Monday through Friday from ten to four each day, and people are welcome to both come browse and check out materials as well as to come in and sit and read if they choose. We do not yet have any in-person group programming. We are working on that, and we are also working on evenings and weekends to come. But for now, Monday through Friday, ten to four, you'll be hearing more about, about our COVID services a bit later. And then also, the last but certainly not least, is that it's my pleasure to announce that the Glendora City Council at their May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, appointed the following to fill vacancies upcoming on the Board of Library Trustees. And those appointees are Erica Landman and Stephen Flowers, and we are, as always, sorry to see any trustees go, and also excited to have new leadership come in and lend their perspective. So it's a bittersweet thing. An agenda item is planned in June for discussion of the orientation process, so you all will have a chance to do that. In the meantime, here at the library, administration and management have lots of checklists and informational binders and things to calendar for our incoming folks. We've already gotten started on all of that. Thank you for your help welcoming them. We will be getting all of their nameplates and helping coordinate the ortho office with the city clerk's office, getting them their orientation materials or photos and all that sort of thing. A gentle reminder that even though these folks have not been sworn in yet, if you choose to reach out to them, just keep in mind that they will be making decisions on library business, and so even now, we need to be careful about maintaining Brown Act propriety. So they should not be part of group email discussions or anything like that even prior to being sworn in. But what a, again, it's bittersweet. We are so glad of the service of the folks who are leaving us and so glad of the service to come for those who are coming in. I am happy to answer any questions that I can.
Questions from anyone? Guess not. Thank you very much, Director Stone. Brings us then to special items, and under that we have the Summer Discovery Challenge, and we are going to hear from Acting Library Services Manager Cindy Romero, I believe.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Doris. So Elvie, if we can go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So the Summer Discovery Challenge, next slide. See if we have the right one. There we go. So in the past, we have had the Summer Reading Challenge. So for about five, six years, our summer reading program, our summer reading clubs have been rebranded as the Summer Reading Challenge, and this year, we decided it was time for another rebrand. So the Summer Reading Challenge has become the Summer Discovery Challenge because after all, the summer is not just about reading, but it's about discovery of all different kinds. Reading, of course, will still be a very big part of the summer challenge, but it is going to be the Summer Discovery Challenge, and as you'll find out as we move through this presentation, it's about all different forms of discovery and learning. If we could have the next slide. So the Summer Discovery Challenge has been a library-wide effort with participation from all different areas of the, of the library, but we have had leadership from two of our staff members who are on the, on the call with us tonight, librarian Tu Gaetano Abundanza and acting librarian Tu Alexis Mendoza. So you'll be hearing from them this evening as well. And next slide. So we started out this process as we, as we decided that we needed to take a look at the, the Summer Reading Challenge, which is now Discovery Challenge, and we, we thought about what our community needed from us, what our community needed to get out of the summer and how we could help provide that for them. So the sorts of things that we were looking at is that we, community members might need a greater sense of community, might need a way to engage with other community members and community projects, developing lifelong learning behaviors, of course, for our little ones, developing reading skills and some of our adults, and developing or maintaining reading habits. So we took all of that into account, and from that, we, we discovered that we had some desired outcomes that our community should be able to expect to get out of participating in the Summer Discovery Challenge. We can look at the next slide. So as a result of participating in the Summer Discovery Challenge, participants will develop or maintain a reading habit, maintain or improve their reading skills over the summer, develop a desire to explore and discover the wider world, seeking out new, new places, ideas, experiences, and skills, engage with community activities and projects throughout the Glendora community, both in person and virtually, and to develop a greater sense of connection and involvement with their community. So that's really what we're hoping our community will get out of the summer as a result of participating with us. We can have the next slide. Lee, we're gonna turn this over to Gaetano and Alexis now.
Yes, good evening, everyone. All right, so Summer Discovery Challenge. So what, what does this actually consist of? What's actually happening? So the components of what you're seeing right now on the screen, so this consists of independent reading, of course, independent activities and earning badges, reward levels, programming the events, to return the Plaza Discovery Place, and youth volunteers, and we'll be going over each of these specific components in detail. Next slide, please. Okay, so of course, independent reading has always been a part of every traditional summer reading challenge. Readers of all ages will be encouraged to develop daily reading habits. Virtual reading badges in the online program will be awarded every five hours, and daily reading speaks will be recognized in the online reporting program. So a word about this, so as far as we talk about badges, you think of the, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and you earn a badge for completing activity or earning a new skill. This is, this, this, this is, think of it in those terms, except it's gonna be done, it's gonna be done live, but then you will report on it online. So someone will either individually or as a family, log in online and report on what they've done or learned or read, and this is what they will learn, their, their virtual badges, which we'll talk about in detail as well. And next slide, please.
Okay. Hi, I'm going to talk about the online reading program. So last year, we unveiled Beanstack, which was a new way to log virtual reading, which coincided greatly with COVID, actually, the pandemic, but we want to take it a step further this year. So if you look on the screen, that's kind of the landing page you'll see when you go to our Beanstack homepage. And the cool thing about Beanstack is that you can sign up and log your reading through a website, or if you have a smartphone, there is an app on both iPhone, Apple, and Android that you're able to download. So it's very convenient if you know anywhere you're reading, if you're reading at the park, if you're reading on the beach and you want to log your reading, you could just scan, you can actually just scan an ISBN number on your book, add it, and track your reading minutes. I also just want to note kind of what Gaetano was mentioning previously, the, the badges. So you'll see just examples of badges, twenty hours completed, and that one on the bottom left shows what kind of prize they get. And the really cool thing about that badge in particular was that was one of the ones that, one of the badge winners made. So you're gonna see some original artwork from our badges as well this summer. And then the one on the right is just, just to keep incentives going, so like Gaetano had previously mentioned as well, they'll get badges, kind of just like a way-to-go badge every five hours, even if they don't receive a prize, just to have some kind of incentive. And the other, other convenient thing for this is that you can have your whole family involved in the Summer Reading Challenge. It's not just for your children, it's for your grandparents, it's for parents, it's for your babies, it's for anyone that wants to just discover new things and learn daily reading habits. And the other cool thing about this is that you can sign up as a family, so you can have mom and dad sign up and have their kids as accounts too. So it's very convenient, very easy. Love this platform. Next slide, please.
Okay, so as, as we mentioned, this is the Summer Discovery Challenge, and so we are using the broadest definition of discovery as possible. So of course, besides the traditional reading milestones and badges, there are many things that you may not associate with summer, with a summer reading challenge, and this is where the independent activities come in. And so you, we designed, the librarians took a look at fun activities and designed badges for many activities, and you're just seeing just a small sample of the kind that you can earn. You can earn badges for camping with your family, for reading about archery, starting a new hobby, stargazing, visiting a museum, designing a board game, learning a new nursery rhyme, and more. So you'll do plenty of reading, but also discovery, learning, learning a new skill, going to a new place. We're going with the broadest definition of, of this as possible to make this more of a, of a broader activity of reading and doing and discovery. And as Alexis mentioned, badges can be earned individually or as a family unit. So families will have the opportunity to learn and discover as a family, to earn family badges and a family reward, which is slightly separate from the individual option. And next slide, please. So when we made these badges, we went and we, we found graphics to attach to each badge name, so you're seeing a few examples of those on your screen. And the three on the left, as Alexis mentioned, those are, those were designed by some of our local students. We had a, a badge design contest, and those three are some of the, the winners. So really, you know, artistic participation by our local students, and then the two on the right are just two of the kind that the staff chose, but there's, there's, I want to say over fifty badges available with reading and other activities for this program, so we're very excited about that. Next slide, please.
So I want to talk about reward levels. So we have always had levels in all our summer reading challenges and previously before that as well. So, but this is a little different this year. So you'll see on the screens that we have our first, first level reward, the ten hours, program completion, twenty hours, but you'll see that we also have the addition of completion of activity badges, and those were the badges that Gaetano just previously mentioned. And like he mentioned, they're independent badges such as, you know, go camping or look at the sky, at the nighttime sky. And because we really want to encourage that broad definition of discovery and learning new things, discovering with your family, and also discovering in your own community is a very big part of it as well. We want people to get out and discover Glendora. So you'll see that in addition to getting to reading, we want all our participants to complete activity badges as well. And then we also added prize levels for family discovery, so complete fifteen family badges, and those are badges that families complete as a family, and they'll get a special little magnet that says they completed the family discovery challenge and then review. So Beanstack also has the capability to write reviews on books you've read, and that's for all ages, not just adults. Kids can write their reviews as well, and if they complete eight book reviews on Beanstack, they'll also get a little prize as well. So we're really trying to encourage, of course, reading habits. As librarians, we're very big on reading, but also encourage that aspect of discovery and especially within our own community and our own community members. Next slide, please.
Okay, so of course, with any reading slash discovery challenge, one of the, the big draws for that is programming, and traditionally, programming has been at the library this year, most programming, I should say. And this year, coming off the, the heels of COVID, we've gone with a more of a hybrid model. There will be some programming at the library up in the plaza, there'll be some virtual programming, and there'll be some programming in some of our local parks. So this is just a way to spread things around, give people as many options as possible, and a chance to, to reconnect with the library physically or virtually, but basically, it's a connection that we haven't had in the past few months, and this is feeding into the discovery challenge, of course, reading and programming as well. And of course, we're always following, always planning events according to L.A. County Department of Public Health or guidelines that will continue as always. Next slide, please.
So Plaza Discovery Place, which was originally created as a way for our patrons to be able to browse outdoors on the plaza when we, when the main floor was closed. However, you, we found, we find that utilizing that space is beneficial for all sorts of activities. So we are going to open Plaza Discovery Place, the summer edition, where participants can come and register for the Summer Reading Challenge, Summer Discovery Challenge, sorry, still getting used to the change, where they'll be able to report, pick up their rewards, connect with staff, and, and also be able to get their to-go kits for their crafts and science and C demonstrations. We also are planning to have community partners come in from other departments, especially like water or transportation, but also we're looking into the opportunities to bring other community partners in to be able to have that community engagement in one place, especially in a place like the plaza, which is so large and often doesn't get utilized as much as we want it to. We want to be able to bring that to life, especially since we can't have everyone indoors this summer. We're kind of trying out something new, and we liked seeing it full too and lit up when it was in the last year when we were, when the main floor was closed. Next slide, please. So our youth volunteers, so as you can imagine, that was a tricky thing to kind of figure out during the pandemic. We, we want to be able to give our youth of Glendora an opportunity to volunteer, not only for them, but we do, our volunteers are very helpful during the summer, and we do like to have their help when we need them. So we're having an opportunity for our youth, so we're having two upper, two kind of youth volunteers. So the first one is our youth leaders in training. Now those are gonna be the ten and eleven-year-olds, and we're going to offer a virtual academy, if you will, of different training sessions where they can learn not just skills that are good for volunteering in the library, but skill set would be good, going out into the community, volunteering at other places, learning customer service skills, learning communication skills. And then we have our youth, youth leadership academy, and these are gonna be the older kids, older than twelve or eleven, no, twelve and older, that we will actually be using, getting a pool of volunteers from to help with our activities this summer, hopefully, such as the Plaza Discovery Place, mostly there may be our outside story times, but we're, we're still working on that, but we're really excited about having this different kind of opportunity. These, these academy meetings will be held virtually, so they'll be, you know, in accordance with the protocols, and we're really excited to just be able to talk to our volunteers again. Next slide, please.
So we've talked a lot about what we're planning on doing with the community and what we hope the community will get out of the Summer Discovery Challenge, but of course, how do we know if we actually achieved this? So the evaluation's gonna take on a couple different forms. We'll of course use traditional measures such as the number of participants, their ages, their amount of reading that they've completed, the number of badges that they've completed, but we're also gonna be looking at using some outcomes evaluation to measure the impacts of, that this program has had on the community. Elvie, if we could go to the next slide, please? So over the last eight years, the Glendora Public Library has participated with the California Library Association statewide initiative, measuring the impacts of summer reading programs across the state. Over the past years, we have added several, several questions to the survey of our own. We asked if participating in the Summer Reading Challenge, because it was still, still summer reading as of last year, if participating had helped the children either maintain or improve their reading skills. On average, over the last eight years, eighty-seven percent of the surveyed participants responded that it had helped to either improve or maintain their reading skills. Sixty-six percent of the surveyed participants said that it helped to develop reading habits. Now, of course, this one gets a little tricky because the way we worded it was develop reading habits. Many of our respondents said they already had that habit, so they marked no, that we didn't help them develop new habits. So we're gonna reword it just attached this summer and actually have it be develop or maintain so that we can try and get a better picture of that. And a new question last summer was, did you learn anything new over, as a result of participating? And we had seventy-six percent of our participants say yes, the surveyed participants. Next slide, please. So this year, we will of course be utilizing the CLA surveys, the California Library Association surveys, and we'll be adding those additional Glendora-specific questions again. The surveys are still under construction at the CLA level. We haven't seen the finals yet, but we do expect those, those questions to remain stable over the course of several years so that we can measure impact over a period of time. Just like that question about maintaining reading skills and developing habits, we've had those questions on the survey for eight years. So we'll be able to measure over time some of the impacts that the, the Discovery Challenge has. We're also looking at a pre and a post survey of our youth volunteers so that we can measure a change in engagement with the community and smaller interactive surveys, kind of like, you know, you drop a, drop a coin in the bucket. You know, if you've got three buckets, you get a question, you drop the coin in the bucket throughout some of the different programs, just to measure some different, different events and the effectiveness of our programs this summer. If we can have the next slide.
Okay, so items that are still under development, those community partnerships I mentioned previously, just being able to reach out to more community partners, program and event scheduling, since we are going to be doing a lot of programs virtually and outdoors, it's a little more logistics that we need to work on. So finding out which park would be the best for certain events or which outdoor space would be the best for certain events is something that are still under development, the volunteer opportunities, we're still developing those as well. As you can imagine, and as I'm sure you know, protocols change day to day, week to week. So we have to make sure that we are still in line with those protocols as they do change and develop. So that's why they're still under development, and of course, like Cindy just mentioned, finalizing those evaluation methods as well.
So if we could go to the next slide, I'll give you a sneak peek of what the Summer Discovery Challenge marketing looks like this summer. So again, it's reading colors your world. So our digital media specialist, Greg Morton, designed us a, a very pretty-looking graphic that, something very similar to this will be going out to the schools, it'll be up on social media as we help to, hope to promote this and have our community participate. We can go to the next slide. And as always, Summer Discovery Challenge is brought to you by the Glendora Public Library, but also with a huge assist from the Friends Foundation. So we wouldn't be able to do it in quite the same way without our Friends Foundation. And if that brings us to the end of our presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Wow, that was great. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Well, I just had, I just noticed really quickly in the previous slide, the one that's going out, at the very bottom, it says Summer Reading Challenge.
Oh my gosh, it does?
Yes. I'm, I'm the editor of this, but anyway. At the very bottom in little tiny letters, so.
Okay, I'll take a look at it. Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
I, I do have some questions. I am so excited for this. I think you guys did a great job putting together the plans for this, and I'm excited that families will have activities to look forward to doing together, and you guys are giving them ideas of things to do outside of the library and outside of reading. But two things, the first thing, I really love how you can scan the barcode at the back of a book. So my question following that is, will you guys be able to collect data on what books people are reading in which age group?
We will have some. It, it will, it'll be more in aggregate, so I won't be able to look and see what books you read and what books Gaetano read and what books Doris read. So we can see some of it, but the book scans and the book titles are not required as part of reporting.
Got it. I think it'd be really cool if you did get a hold of like the book titles, is just to have a general idea of like who's reading what, who's interested in what, and how we can improve our collection. And then my second question is the book reviews. I love this idea, and I was thinking maybe we could somehow share or post these book reviews in the library somewhere on the walls or something. But yeah, that's, that's all that I have.
So the reviews are gonna be posted on, on the app, so if you do a review, we curate them, so we actually have to approve them before they become, before the public can see them, you know, when else can see them, but then you can see them in the app. You can see what other people have reviewed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sounds like an exciting summer, and for these kids who didn't have a very exciting summer last year, it sounds glorious. So thank you all so much, and we'll be eager to see how it evolves before summer comes.
Yeah, us too.
I'm sure. We'll, we'll get together and hear about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us then to our consent calendar. Adding items number five and six is new to our.
I think we've got one more report.
Did I forget something?
Yeah, we're on the by the numbers report, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I, I was so excited about this summer challenge that I forgot about the library director. That brings us then to item three, the by the numbers report, and we'll hear from our library director.
So that's actually how the world should be. I mean, really, the library is about the community, and so, so the more it's about them and what they're getting to do and the less it's about the library director, the better. So, so actually, I'm glad to hear it. Thank you. All right, so at our strategic plan review workshop, we did run through this report. We have updated some of the numbers. And so if I could have the next slide, please. These are current as of May fourteenth, so not only did we want to share just the updated numbers, but also use, use this report again, share this report in a form where it, it might have a, get a slightly larger reach than we had at the strategic planning workshop. So if I could have the next slide, please. This is just a reminder that these numbers are, are not like our hardcore apples-to-apples statistics. They're just to give general ideas of, of what's been happening since, since COVID impacted all of our lives. So there, if you, if you want really methodological statistics, we can provide those as a separate thing. This is just more illustrative. Next slide, please. Okay, so just a reminder that the first date that the main floor closed of the library was Saturday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty, and that wording is very important. It was, it was really the main floor was closed. Remember, the library was always providing services. Our e-library was online the whole time, and we started with our curbside library to go almost immediately. There were a few days gap there, but a couple of weeks, but, but in, in, the library has been open this whole time. This just really marks when we closed the bricks and mortar building the main floor. So that's the start of all of this. Next slide, please. And if you just count the days that we normally would have been open in that time, not including Sundays and holidays and sort of thing, but our normal opening days, there would have been three hundred and fifty of those since COVID started. Next slide, please. So here's in terms of access to the library, what's happened over those three hundred and fifty possible days. The main floor now, as of, actually as of these statistics on the fourteenth, had been open twenty-one days. Our Plaza Discovery Place and that logo there indicates this is one of the things that was supported by the Friends Foundation, and we're so grateful for that. The Plaza, Plaza Discovery Place had twelve sessions, and as you've heard from the Summer Discovery Challenge folks, there's going to be a summer challenge edition of that coming up, Summer Discovery Edition. So you, we'll see the Plaza Discovery Place make a reemergence. The computer center is now part of the main floor service. It has been recombined after being up in Bidwell for a while, but that has been available for sixty days. Next slide, please. Library to Go, as I mentioned, we barely took a breath, and, and the staff was so great. They wanted to do this and they came up with it right away. So two hundred and seventy-nine days, the Library to Go has been offered. And as you know, we are, we cover the city's main phone line. We also have our own phone line and, and of course, email assistance and those services have been available for two hundred and ninety days across the COVID months. Next slide, please. And here it is, the electronic library, which we, you know, is hugely supported by not only the city, but the Friends Foundation. We had, what was it, just over three hundred bricks and mortar days, between three hundred and four hundred, four hundred and twenty-five electronic library days. So that was a huge asset to, as a community opportunity across these COVID months. Next slide, please. Okay, so what did that mean in terms of, of our community visitors of different sizes, shapes, virtual person and person and that sort of thing? So far, the computer center, we've had five hundred and thirty folks, visits that, for our computer center. The Plaza Discovery Place, in those twelve, those twelve sessions had four hundred and sixty visits. Next slide, please. Our main floor so far, twenty-eight hundred. It's, it's so exciting, it's so exciting to have people back in that part of the building to have that service get added to this whole bouquet of stuff that's been available this whole year. This statistic, we, we just had a glitch in our systems and, and did not report it correctly last time. It was actually just, just under a thousand when we reported on this earlier this month. That number was incorrect. Actually, the main city phone line by itself has brought in phone visitors numbering over five thousand across the year. So library staff has done a great job of connecting callers to the city with, with the resources they need, whether they are specific city departments or whether they are resources in the county or other agencies. This, it's, it's been a great information referral task that the staff has been doing. Next slide, please. So we've had over thirty-seven hundred visits to our virtual programs and Library to Go, over thirteen thousand community visits there across the year. Next slide, please. So what do people get or take away from them or access? What's, you know, what's like sort of the library inventory? What's the, actually really should say it's the community's inventory, not ours. So across that year, over six thousand to-go program bags have been accessed by the community, and thanks to the Friends Foundation for a lot of the stuff on this page here. Our electronic library checkouts, over forty-three thousand across the year. Next slide, please. Our subscription resources, these are our paid databases. A lot of people think of these as being very researchy and, and they, you know, they don't, it's, it's hard for them to conceptualize, but clearly, this is a big deal. We've had over a hundred and fourteen thousand searches of our subscription paid databases, and this is, this stuff is important in this day of, you know, of authoritative information, where you're going to find it, how you're going to know. These are, a lot of these are vetted publications that, that we subsidize the access to. So this is great for students and adults and at all ages who need to get some research and have authoritative resource, and you can tell from the usage of it that it's, it's a key resource. Next slide, please. Okay, just a little wrap-up here. Those are, you know, numbers, and they are important to get the scope of what we're doing, but the library is also a very intimate place, so we wanted to share with you some of the statements that our folks made during National Library Month. We asked them to complete this question that's been a standard of one of our surveys for, for some years now. Because of the Glendora Public Library, I have been able to, dot, dot, dot. And a few, I mean, this is, these are great, and these are only a sampling of what we got that month, but I wanted to point out a few of these things. The first one, right off the bat, meet new people. How exciting is it that, that even in this age of isolation, people really did have a chance to start new friendships virtually? We saw this happen, especially in the Harry Potter chapter, you know, chapter at a time reading club, but other places as well, and, and people who did not know each other prior face-to-face in real, you know, in, in real time, so to speak. They, they started friendships virtually, and that's a huge thing, as you know, when you're faced with the isolation of something like this pandemic. So anyway, as you can expect, we helped people stay safe during the pandemic. We continued helping people learn how to read. We supported students with, with their, their reading goals and with their homeschooling and with their term papers. We helped with the genealogy searches, and I love this last one. We helped people grow as people. So, so on one side, you have the, the scope, the sheer numbers of what's been happening this year. Like I said, we never really closed, and then on the other side, you have what that means, person by person by person, and how the lives are changed. So again, I just wanted to share some of those updated numbers with you and make sure this got a, a little bit sort of broader airtime. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Anybody have questions? Please, I didn't let Janet talk almost. I hear no questions. So thank you very much, Director Stone, and we look forward to the coming year with more time with people on the main floor and with chairs to sit in. Thank you so much. That brings us now to the consent calendar. Adding items number five and six is new to our consent calendar. They are part of the new order of business described by the city clerk's team at the March trustees meeting. As before, items on the consent calendar will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion unless a member of the governing body requests specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Although there will be no separate discussion without removing items from the consent calendar, trustees may individually comment upon any items should they wish. Does anyone wish to comment on item four through six? Or to pull one of those items off of the consent calendar? Hearing no one, that brings us to, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Chu.
I think you. Sorry, that was a motion by trustee Merkley and a second by Vice President Gutierrez, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, I can now take a roll call vote. Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Merkley.
Aye.
Trustee Tolan.
Aye.
Vice President Gutierrez.
Aye.
And President Blum.
Aye.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, President Blum.
Thank you very much. That brings us then to board agenda items, and there are none this evening. And then on to unfinished business. Item seven, self-evaluation of Board of Library Trustees for fiscal year 2021. This is continued from the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Director Stone, will you present the staff report?
I will, absolutely. Thank you. So in case this item sounds familiar, that is because at the March meeting, board discussion included a desire to waive the 2020, and that's the way it was put, the 2020 self-evaluations, because COVID didn't leave many opportunities to attend meetings and participate in library events and the things that the evaluation is usually based on. That, that discussion, however, did not specify whether the intent was to waive only for fiscal year 2019 to 2020, or also include the entire calendar year of 2020, which then would mean you are waiving the evaluation for the current fiscal year 2020 to 2021 as well. The trick is, of course, a year like 2020 is partly in two different fiscal years, and we just need to clarify your intent and desire in terms of, of a self-evaluation for the current fiscal year we are in. So I turn it back to President Blum to conduct whatever discussion is necessary.
Okay, we will go to discussions, questions and discussion. Trustee Chu, anything?
Um, so, so we have yet to do an evaluation for 2019, correct?
So that's the year that in March, you took action to waive that self-evaluation? The, the board decided not to do one. So you are correct, it has not been done, and it is no longer pending because that one was officially waived by board action.
Can we have other members discuss so I can understand a little bit more and then maybe come back to me?
Sure. Who, who wants to go next? And if you'll give your name when you go next, it might help.
Trustee Merkley. I think that we have barely attended, because Brianna, it's in fiscal year that ends June thirtieth. And so if we do 2021, that will take us through next, the end of next month, and we really haven't. Or maybe it's me because I missed January and February. But we, I don't feel like I've done anything in the last, how many, how, how long has it been, fourteen months, thirteen? I don't know how long it's been. I don't feel like I've done anything that I, I can evaluate how I've done. It would not make me feel good to evaluate myself right now.
I concur with Robyn. I, if it was a mistake or wasn't made clear, because I think was one of the individuals that either moved, motioned or seconded that motion, it should have taken us through to 2021 fiscal year, quite frankly. And if it needs to be amended, however the verbiage is to amend it, I would so make a motion to that effect.
And I would.
I see. I, I totally, I understand not, like being restricted from COVID to not be able to go to events and stuff. I also feel like we did have an opportunity to, to go to online events or to, I mean, Janet was sending out reports throughout the pandemic that we could read and stay up to date. I guess. Um, but then, so then we would only technically be evaluating ourselves from when we started to the end of June of this year, correct? Okay, if that's the case, then I, I would also agree to, to waive or put aside the evaluations for, yeah, this year, this fiscal year.
Is there further discussion? So I believe we have a motion and a second.
Yes, so that, that if I understand correctly now, we can't amend the previous motion because it was already made, it was already passed. So what we can do then is to, if I understand correctly, a motion to waive the required evaluation for fiscal year 2020, which would end in June, correct?
Fiscal year 2021.
Fiscal, sorry. COVID erased a whole year, but fiscal year 2021, rather. And that was a motion by Vice President Gutierrez and a second by trustee Merkley.
Yes.
Okay, so I can take a roll call vote. Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Merkley.
Aye.
Trustee Tolan.
Aye.
Vice President Gutierrez.
Aye.
And President Blum.
Aye.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, President Blum.
Thank you very much, and thank you Janet for bringing that to us. That brings us then to new business, update on the proposed two-year budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021, 22, and 2022, 23. Director Stone, tell us about the money.
Well, thank you once again. So I am really sort of the warm-up act for the star of our show, which is who happens to be here, our city manager, Adam Raymond. So I'll kick this off, and then he and I will sort of tag-team our way through, through the budget update for all of you. If I could have the next slide, please. So this is, this is what we're doing. This is a two-year budget for fiscal years 2021 through 22, and then the following one, 2022 through 23. And that, that first one would begin July first of 2021, so a couple of months from now. Next slide, please. So here's what we're going to cover in the following minutes. We're going to talk a little bit about the budget and the capital improvement program, just give you a sense of, of what they are, how they work here in Glendora. We're going to give you an overview of the authorized positions, in words of the personnel that's being proposed for the library, the revenues that we will be reporting as part of the budget and, and that we will be anticipating for next year's, the next two years' budgets, and the expenses as well. Next slide, please. and the um expenses as well. Next slide, please. We have a few challenges to talk with you about. Um we'll conclude with our recommendation and of course, any chance, uh any questions that you might have, we will try to field those. So um at this point, I will turn it over to city manager Adam Raymond.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you letting me uh hang out this evening for a little bit. Uh if you could go to the next slide, please. So I'll just provide a general overview of the city's philosophy on its spending plan and sort of how that works with the library. Turn it back over to Janet for some specific information on uh positions and revenue and expenditures. So at a high level, our our next two-year budget really provides an overview of our resources. It talks about our revenues and expenditures and really encapsulates how we continue to provide services to the citizens, whether it's library services or police services. Whether you're coming to the front counter to pull building permits. Um if we're talking about planned projects, for example, in our strategic plan, we have some first mile, last mile projects surrounding our future Gold Line Station. Um we have a robust uh street management plan that we just got an update on. Um where we look at spending another million dollars a year on on uh streets and roads. So thank you to Measure E there. And also we talked about paying our required obligations. So we have staff we need to pay. We have CalPERS obligations, uh we have various uh payments for debt and other types of commitments we're in with um the county and our other partnerships with other cities. So um the presentation tonight again is just a very high level. Um we are still working on as we march forward towards our June date. Um our total spending plans around a hundred million dollars, our general fund budget's around forty million. Um and that is where the majority of the resources come from the library department. Next slide, please. So speaking of the library, there are usually three main areas which we have money. As a, as a, as a quick reminder, cities uh have something called fund accounting, so individual checking accounts for specific items. Uh some are more specific and some are more generalized. Uh the general fund is where the majority of your tax dollars go to to fund city services. That's where the majority of the library funding comes from. We also have capital projects. So these are an assortment of funds and we'll talk a little more about capital projects in detail here, probably more than the library's seen in a while, actually. To provide the city's uh sort of overview of capital projects, how that funding works. Um capital projects can be specified for water, can be for storm water out of uh a related county initiative and also in the general fund too. So just really quickly taking a step back, the city at the end of every fiscal year looks at hopefully the surplus it has left in order to sort of move towards more substantial or a sustainable investment. Um we look at the money left at your end, we ensure that we have forty percent reserve. And then we look at allocating funds for future capital projects in a set aside fund and also for future CalPERS obligations. Um so some of the capital funding this year comes from that set aside funding from surpluses in previous years. Our special revenue funds, this includes um it's a general categorization of funding that has a very specific purpose. Um in this case, it's the Library Friends Foundation, which for revenue receives has a very specific set of goals and objectives and it tries to meet with the funding and restricts how those funds can be spent. Next slide, please. So the city has a capital im- improvement program um that is anywhere between five to sometimes fifteen million dollars a year, depending on the projects that it takes on. Um and this is a five-year document that goes with our two-year budget that provides a roadmap for the city's capital infrastructure. So as we're starting a new two-year budget cycle, the first two years of any five-year CIP uh predicates those funds that we, we are pretty sure we will receive in the out years, year three, four and five, we try to set aside funding that we think we will have in the out years. Uh but this is California and it is LA County and resources and availability change frequently, sometimes from week to week. Um and we'll also look at the American Recovery Plan Act. Um and little, and talk a little bit about how that may impact both library and city operations. Next slide, please. So as we go a little bit deeper into CIP projects, the majority of which are aimed at maintaining our existing infrastructure, which most people assume are roads and sidewalks. But we also have needs in capital facilities. Uh Glendora being an older city, we tend to build buildings when we first become cities and then try to hang on to those facilities as long as we can. Um as cities pay prevailing wage, as cities uh must have other, when we're building, it's not like a home we're building to stay for thirty years, we're really building facilities that last fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years. And just the cost overall, a little more expensive. So um as we continue to look at the capital investment needed in all of our facilities, including the library, we sort of keep these things in mind and ensuring that the health and safety of our community members are taken into consideration as well. Next slide, please. For all of those accounting nerds, uh CIP is classified as any capital investment over five thousand dollars and that's because the standards of which we do accounting mandate that that is the level at which it must be done. And in the state of California, to ensure cities pay prevailing wage, they define a capital project essentially anything over a thousand dollars when you put a nail on the wall. Um and so for the library specifically, um our capital funds come from our discretionary pot of money uh which can be used for any assortment of projects from streets and sidewalks to roads uh to facility improvements as well. Next slide, please. So in this two-year budget, um as we've expanded sort of our resource availability in the city, we've looked at new ways to ensure that this is a transparent process. So the city's in the middle of implementing Open Gov, which is a pretty robust, public-facing budgeted and financial system. Uh it takes information from our financial system to push a budget to actuals. Uh and it allows for a much more graphical and immersive experience. Um and we are working to get that updated and online here pretty soon. Uh this also is a unique tool where it allows us to provide some much-needed commentary so people understand what they're looking at as well. Next slide, please. So the fun part, uh literally when you look in the Glendora municipal code, um under the city manager, uh these are, this is one of my job duties is to recommend a proposed budget to the city council. So we're here tonight to talk about the library's specific funding sources. Get your input, it's really important to us. Um we'll do this with every board and commission. And as we'll talk about later, we'll have both a budget workshop with the city council on June eighth and potential adoption, the second meeting in June. Um so we take your input recommendations very seriously and do our best to incorporate those into a final spending plan that we present to the city council. Next slide, please. Um so the timeline that we're talking about here, so we are working on our online proposed from a staff perspective budget book that we get input from all the boards and commissions. We had the city council on June eighth for a study session where we lay out our plans from capital improvement to water projects to our general fund expenditures. Um ensure that the strategic plan goals set by the council um and looked through by staff are funded. I have a general philosophy that what gets funded gets done. Um it's really difficult to have lots of projects that we want to do without identified funding. And then finally, we'll be before city council for budget adoption on June twenty second. Um was, which meets our obligation to have an adopted spending plan in place uh by July first. Next slide, please. And with that, for more details, specific library, uh turning it back over to Janet.
Thank you very much. Okay, so um cover a few um broad strokes areas of the budget for you so you can see um numbers here. Um this table shows what they call the our authorized positions. In other words, it's a broad, it's a broad strokes way of looking at um the the number of full-time equivalent staff. So if full-time person works forty hours a week, this is um uh basically, and that's one unit. This is how many of those forty-hour units we have. So part-time staff are some portion of that forty hours per week is one way to look at it. So anyway, you can see the full-time positions at the top are all whole numbers because they are all forty hours a week, full-time. And then down below that, um we, i- in the part-time positions, you'll see the full-time equivalent portions of how many part, you know, part-time staff we have. These are not human bodies, these are in terms of that forty hour or two thousand eighty hours per year. Um how, what portion of that they're working. So anyway, you can see um in the bolded section where it says total department FTE or full-time equivalent, that we're pretty stable fiscal year twenty one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Um any changes and any movement among those three columns that you see is really sort of housekeeping on our part to make sure that um that the positions are being um uh funded uh out of the the places that we would expect them, you know, Friends Foundation versus the general fund and that sort of thing. So um so anyway, um like I said, pretty stable. Now, um we are um looking at um ways to, you know, organize the library um to be the most flexible and uh responsive to the community um for the next, you know, I don't know, decade or two if we're lucky. Um and uh we are, of course, um looking at compensation as well and we'll come back uh to talk about that a little bit more in the challenges section of the evening. Next slide, please. Okay, so um this is our uh a view of our revenues. Um this uh has been changed. Uh we've gotten some updates since the um the printed uh or, you know, online board packet. Um really, the the only um change that you will see is that they have uh now represented um our expected um uh contribution from the Friends Foundation to support literacy. Uh we have not gone through the grant-seeking process with the Friends Foundation yet. Um but for that one program, um we uh, you know, we're sort of putting a placeholder in for where we uh expect the support specifically for that one program. Um we um off, these numbers will change when we start to see um to see the grant process come to fruition. We, you know, assuming that we, we are getting the support that we have traditionally gotten in the last few years from the Friends Foundation, we'll see those numbers um add added here. So a few things that you'll see when you look at this table. Uh you'll see, of course, the impacts from the initial months of COVID because that impacted a lot of ways that we um did collect revenues. Um which would include things like, you know, renting our meeting rooms and and um collecting library fees and and copy fees and that sort of thing. Um as we um as we estimated um our twenty twenty-one outcomes and projected into the future, um we tried to take a lot of things into account, for example, the loosening of restrictions potentially this fourth quarter of of this year and then in the next couple of years. Um we tried to look back at at pre-COVID revenue figures and trends and then adjusted them to represent kind of a gradual, gradual return to full services, full in-person services. So that's what you're seeing there in terms of our estimates. And um also um approved um earlier this year to be proposed for the city's master fee schedule was authorization um for the um for library fee amnesty programs. And if that goes through, then we also tried to account for the possibility of of uh the the financial impact of um offering amnesty occasionally for fines and fees to lower some obstacles to accessing the collection. All right, and then the the grants, um you'll see um a five thousand dollar figure here. Um uh and the grant revenue, that's the California State Library's Crisis Collection Initiative and that's why it disappears. Um because uh uh unless they um reinstituted next fiscal year, um it was, you know, a a one-off thing in response to COVID. Um I mentioned the literacy program and then the the fact that the Friends Foundation processes other, other, other than the our placeholder for literacy have not yet happened. So that's what you're seeing there in terms of revenues. Next slide, please. All right, so the expenditure tables, um this is one place where there have been no changes um since, since your packet. And um uh basically, uh year to year, this is is pretty um stable. Um again, one, you know, when you see differences, some of that uh is um because we have have not um reflected. Uh well, anyway, um it, there there will be developments as we move forward um between now and um and during fiscal year twenty-two, some of those will be Friends Foundation-related, some of them will be capital improvement-related and that sort of thing. And so you'll see some of that, some shifts in that, in that bottom line. Um yes.
And just really, really quickly, just when you look at the operational costs above, please don't think that the overall allocation to the library department is actually shrinking. What is also incorporated in there is the city issued a pension bond that that reduced costs by about a million dollars a year uh across the city. And so some of those savings are in, are are captured in those operating expenditures above.
Thank you. Yeah, so there will be, uh, yeah, so some, some of that change uh will stay and then you'll see some um some adjustments as we finalize um other funding sources in the CIP. Thank you, Adam, I appreciate that. Okay, so um what you see reflected here includes the authorized positions that we just took a look at. Um uh offsetting some of what Adam's talking about is the fact that personnel causes um costs are actually going up. So there's a a given a take there. Um I mentioned in the written staff report that um you're seeing some, some reallocation between divisions of the library um to represent really the um the actual uh authority and responsibilities of the library services manager, which is a relatively new position and really does touch all areas of the library. So we redistributed um so some of the funding of that. It's again, it's a little bit of housekeeping to better reflect where the impacts of that job really lie. Um and I want to clarify that technical services is not IT, that's not information technology, that's an old library term for basically um basically like the processing of the books um is is what technical services refers to. So it's some of that behind-the-scenes stuff and we know that that library services manager has a much broader reach than that. So you're seeing that here. Um I mentioned that the Friends Foundation funds are pending. Um so um so we'll, we'll see of some shifts um as we get that grant process um under our belts each year. Um we also acknowledged um in um the development office um line that um we are uh that the Friends Foundation has made some changes um that um reduces the impact on library services. We're grateful to them for that. So we want to make sure we acknowledge that as we um as we indicate uh what, you know, what are, what resources are called upon for us to support them. Um also, um just wanted to reassure you when you see these big numbers at administration that um that there are lots of library-wide costs that are included there. Um it's not like a white tower thing. Um it's, it's that uh lots of different um library-wide things like um staff and board recognition, you know, things like printer supplies, signs and barricades, building equipment, um all dues and memberships. Um training and education, contract services, things that touch all the different um divisions of the library wind up in administration. So um so that's why that number is so, is so large. Uh let's see here, again, um we're, you know, updating some numbers related to literacy services and um and again, the capital improvement um program, project um s- um stuff may still change some of these numbers. So that's a, an overview. Um again, relatively speaking, you know, pretty, pretty stable across that bottom line. Um especially when you take into account the the things like that Adam mentioned before. Okay, so um that's uh just a quick look at the personnel and the revenues and expenditures. The next slide, um please, we start talking about um the the capital parts of the library, the facilities and the equipment. So I will turn that back over to Adam.
Janet, so there are two areas we sort of talk about capital as it relates uh to city facilities. One is capital outlay, which tends to be things that go into the facilities. Another one is the capital which are actually those building-type elements or things that are stuck on buildings, so to speak. So the library department um in meeting, let me back up briefly. So as we go through the process in which to come up with a five-year capital spending plan, I think it's important just to reiterate that. the process in which to come up with a five-year capital spending plan, I think it's important just to reiterate that for the first two years in fiscal year twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, we identify funding sources that we believe we will have. In the out years of the plan, the remaining three years of a five-year plan, those are our goals to fund those projects and and identify funding when the time comes. One of the items, back up briefly again, because the city's taken the appropriate steps, because we have measure E, because we have saved money on P O B. And because we were very wise during COVID to not spend on certain projects and watched our spending very carefully. We are in a position to fund some necessary capital improvements in the city. One of them is a chair replacement for the Bidwell forum, for those of you who have sat in chairs, not always the most comfortable things in that building. And a very heavily utilized, a facility by the community and the city. When you're looking at furniture that's going to last a very long time for years. The original request that we are going to recommend is funding is replacement of the chairs. Janet, I don't remember, I know Elke told me, I can't remember off the top of my head how many chairs this actually is. But it's a total replacement of all the chairs that we have and the estimated cost there in the second year of our two-year budget is fifty five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Now for the fun stuff. So as you can imagine, every single department has a list a mile long on necessary updates. We are going to recommend to the city council a pretty significant investment in the library facility in itself. The majority of this, though, you will not see. As you know, there is a well-documented challenge with our H V A C system. It is a love-hate relationship. More hate than love. It works not as intended, both not cool in the summer and not hot enough in the winter. And it needs to be addressed. And we find ourselves in a position to address some of those concerns. The total cost of that project is over a million dollars, approaching one point one million. This isn't just replace, when we, when we talk about this replacement, we, we also talk about how do we organize this? So if the library undergoes a more significant facelift and out years, we allow ourselves to implement this H V A C replacement in a manner of which can be segmented into smaller parts of the library itself. If there are movable walls or other interior changes in the future. The library department and Janet or staff do a remarkable job of very clearly identifying and articulating all the needs from a capital side of the library. One of the other items that we're, we're recommending the city council fund is what we're calling the Bidwell Plaza renovation. As you'll notice, this amounts about eight hundred and sixty thousand over a five-year period. The amounts in the first two years largely look at ensuring the seal to the Bidwell Plaza itself is, is done in a manner of which stops it from raining inside the library. I know how much we all need rain, but inside the library is not the best course of action here. So this funding helps us solve that. Not solve it permanently, but solve it from a temporary perspective and also look at some additional lighting and or potential shade on, on the plaza. The library itself, as the Gold Line Station becomes more and more a reality in Glendora, really is gonna have the chance to serve a purpose, to serve an entirely new crowd that's coming up Glendora Avenue. We could look at some other changes. And so the money in the out years predicates setting aside funding to help achieve this vision as to having a more robust public space. Additionally, recommended for funding in this two-year period includes some wayfinding signage and some, and a replacement or additional digital marquee on, on Glendora Avenue that allows for more robust communication with both passersby and the public. There are lots of other items that are in here, including a pretty significant interior renovation for almost a million dollars. One of the things the city's doing that's not clearly identified in here from a capital standpoint is prior to COVID and the world sort of hitting pause for a year, as was said earlier, we had set out to get an R F P done for space planning. You know, a lot of the city facilities have not built, sort of mid-century modern, were built at the turn of the nineteen hundreds. And with that comes a great deal of challenges for a modern workplace. We have issues from connectivity, Wi-Fi, for example, having to connect to each access point as you move through the building and not being able to take your devices and move through creates challenges for staffing and where people are located. And we learned during COVID the need to be very flexible. So as we evaluate all of our city facilities, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars set aside from a city level to perform said assessment and come back in the out years, fiscal years twenty four, twenty five and twenty six and the future with very specific, armed with a specific set of needs and wants and funding those projects along the way. So the interior renovation is while we have details on what that could look like, that picture won't be become more clear until we go on. But it's our acknowledgement that the library itself, staff does a remarkable job. But there is some work that needs to be done on our end to ensure that the library continues to be that place of community gathering, that place where ideas can be shared and be able to fund the interior design necessary to continue that progress. Additionally, the Bidwell, we know it needs lighting. I've been told the parts are becoming hard to come by. I know it sounds crazy that it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars for new light bulbs, but it's a lot more than that. It's a total rewiring of the system. And again, that, that doesn't come cheap. And so this is the total look at what we think could be necessary over the next five years. I will add that if we look at any sort of comprehensive interior renovation, the nine hundred and sixty thousand is probably understated, if anything. But until we have that dialogue, until we understand that assessment and we truly know the needs of the community and the wants of the community, it's hard to come up with an exact dollar figure there. So next slide, please. Janet, you're up.
Well, thank you, Adam, for, for walking us through that. So a few things about the challenges that are ahead. I mean, they know there are lots of them in the world, right? And there are, you know, lots of them in terms of our eight responsibilities and, and what we're trying to address in terms of the world of ideas. But these are specifically the things that that, that will help when we can address them will really help us make ours, serve the community best possible way for the next five, ten, if we do it right, maybe even longer than that, years. So first of all, I mentioned before that we are looking at different ways of organizing the library. I have been telling you for some time that the this traditional sort of division that we have, you know, adult and youth services and frontline and backstage staffing, it doesn't really reflect the way that the staff needs to work together to really address the needs of the community in a responsive fashion. So, so we are, you know, looking at ways to provide sort of more of a, a project management kind of structure. And we're already starting to actually operate that way inside the old system. So, so we're looking at that. And also, in addition, you, so you can see on the city strategic plan that there, you know, there is an item there outlined for all to see that we're gonna look at what they call a comp and class study for the library, compensation and classification. So that we can, and look at these ideas of, of how we want to structure the library for the future, not totally ignore the rest of the industry. Because we need to have some, you know, comparison of, of what our folks are doing compared with the rest of the public library world. Maybe create some crosswalks there. And, and then also just address what it is we are asking those folks to do. What sort of expertise we expect them to have, what sort of training we expect them to have. And to study that and make sure that we are compensating them appropriately based on what, you know, what it is we're expecting them to achieve and bring with them to do that. So there's, there are a couple of different things there in terms of the organization and in terms of the compensation. So, so they're hooked together and that, the staff is, is spectacular. They're doing great work. This, this would really just sort of help, help illustrate, not just for this great staff, but for, you know, the staff to come in some years, illustrate exactly what, what we're expecting in terms of, of how we work together to be responsive to the community. Adam's actually already touched on this next one a lot. We are lots of things. We are not just this building in which I am actually still currently sitting this evening. But, you know, that's, that is a significant part of our services as we, this is our gathering place. This is where not only do we house the physical world of ideas, but we also house the opportunities for people to get together and gather and talk about it. And, you know, we are offering both library inventory and that, that opportunity to discuss the world of ideas outside of these walls. But, but this place, the need for, you know, for the corner library is, is not gonna go away. It just changes and morphs. So it is, you know, reaching its fiftieth birthday. So part of it is, is the age, Adam talked to you about some of the projects that we're trying to address in, in terms of the, the, just the viability of the building. But also to address how it also responds to the needs of the community and how we can sort of rebuild the inside of it so that we don't end up with like a legacy footprint that is, that we're stuck with for a couple of decades. And that we can, as we learn what the, what the community needs and as that changes faster and faster and faster, we can adapt the main floor, well, both floors and the plaza, our whole little library come, come campus. We can adapt that to respond to those community needs. And, and, you know, COVID, as we talked about at the strategic planning workshop is, is really, you know, that's, it was a big disruptor, but it was a really great example of, of, of an environment that we need to respond to, right? If we know what our responsibilities are and we have designed like our organization and our facilities and our finances to be able to respond to the environment, then, then we can, we can be responsive in COVID, the same way we could be responsive in, you know, the, in the next roaring twenties to come, as some people are saying are ahead of us now. We can be responsive in other kinds of disaster and in other kinds of, you know, when things are going well. So, so anyway, so the aging bricks and mortar, it's partly the age and it's partly also just how to make it more flexible for the future. And finally, the, the last piece here is this idea of needing to institutionalize. And also like, it's both operationally and also just in our own culture as staff, this idea of of creating a community conversation. We're, we're sort of, we're great at it intimately, one-on-one across the desks. We're starting to learn, like Cindy talked about, all the kinds of different sort of survey things that we do to see how our programs are affecting people. That's, that's essential. But we need to, to build on that and to create a whole sort of methodological structure that, that on the big scale and on the small scale for continually finding out what it is people need. And, and being able to respond to it quickly. It used to be, you know, agencies would do like their, like some sort of big community survey somewhere every, from every five years to even every twenty years. And they would use that as their snapshot of how to serve their public. And those things, they, things are changing too fast these days. So, so to be able to really use that new staff organization that we're working toward and to be able to use this, this re-envisioned building, we also just need to develop this culture. And I have, I don't have numbers yet for that. But, but as we start developing what the costs of that are, you can bet that I will be going back to Adam and then to counsel to help support, to help support the costs of that sort of ongoing dialogue. But those are really the, kind of the, the three cornerstone of, of what will, I think, put us in motion for, for longer than just like the next season or the next year. But hopefully for, you know, a decade or two. Next slide, please. Oh, and Adam, I don't know if you have any, if you want to address any changes, there, I mean, challenges, if there's anything that you would like to add to that commentary.
I mean, I, I think anytime we talk about the budget, there's always more wants and needs than haves, e- even when times are good. And let alone when times are not. So we find ourselves in a position moving forward. We've done a tremendous job. We're very thankful of measure E and some other wise decisions that were made in order to be in this position to even talk about funding some of these larger capital projects in the future. So happy to answer any questions. Please ask them. Don't be afraid. There are no dumb questions when it comes to the budget. Thank you.
Go ahead. No, no, I was, I, the question slide is next. So I just want to mention, as Adam explained, this does go to council for approval. So what we are, you know, really just recommending is is a receive and file of this report this evening. But yes, definitely the, the questions.
I assume there may be a few. Rather than starting with trustee two, we'll start with trustee Merkley this time. Robert, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Trustee, Tolan?
I have a hard time thinking about these numbers, you know, four million dollars in the capital improvement project without putting that in relation to other numbers. So I don't have any questions at this time, but I just had that comment.
So I, just for perspective, as we look at the total C I P projects necessary in the city, the city needs to replace its E R P system, so finance and H R system, which has an end of life twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three. And our planning permitting system, which has an end of life on twelve thirty one, twenty twenty two. So both of those in total, for both replacements, could be about a million and a half dollars, a million into a million and a half dollars in, in total. Outside of some potential street projects, which we're looking at trying to fund three million dollars a year in street projects. That includes a lot of co-projects with water would be sort of the largest category of funding outside of water-specific projects, which can be very expensive. So the, but from a facility assessment, the largest dollar amount that we're recommending for the two-year budget is the library with an H V A C replacement. It's one of the most utilized public resources that we have. And while it's difficult that you don't see it, right, it doesn't change. It definitely is a very important aspect of what happens each and every day.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Roger, you have any questions? Roger? Roger?
Yeah, there are a lot of challenges ahead. And I don't envy the, moving forward here, the decisions and the process that Adam will be going through with the city council and so forth. That's quite an undertaking. And we're just at that stage of life, I guess, and stage of aging in the buildings and what Adam was mentioning on the roads in Glendora. Been a resident here since nineteen sixty eight. And yes, there, there's, I don't know, there's a lot of infrastructure that does need servicing and need the funds for that. I just might ask that regarding the Friends Foundation, you know, their sole purpose in existence, after being part of it for about sixteen years now, is to fund the, the library projects. And they did change the system on requesting funds and so forth. But there's a ma- one point seven million dollars in there and there's an endowment that's coming forth. So there'll be, and we've got this night on the plaza coming up here in July where our Admiral Kitty Garvey's goal is to raise two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that night. So I think this will be a continuation and with the endowment established. But one thing, is the M O U anywhere near completion at this point? Because that will really help resolve a lot of things going forward. It's had a life of its own for so few years now. So I, I would just thought I'd pose the question here. And if it is, because there, there is a lot of challenges here, but I, I know that as far as the Friends Foundation aspect, that'll be there for. Friends Foundation aspect, that'll be there for many years to come. But I do have a lot of respect for what you're going through and what the challenges are gonna be there. That's a lot of major decision-making, but it is what it is going forward there.
So Adam, I'll take the MOU question if you like. So last, last summer, last year, sometime, yeah, sometime during COVID, we had a great meeting with representatives from the library, from city administration, from the city council, from the library board, from the Friends Foundation, city attorney, had a great conversation about the drafts of the MOU, and from that meeting, prepared a draft from, you know, from the notes that we had, and that was presented to the Friends Foundation. And we are now awaiting their written feedback on their take on that, on that draft. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to resolve whatever differences or make any adjustments we need to from there. So that is pending.
Yes, I do recall that that was the last statement made at the executive committee level. So you're waiting on their response at this point in time. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, trustee two?
I have no question. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple probably for Adam. I'm interested, you know, this is a broad question. There is great largess coming to cities and states apparently from Washington, and then there's more largess coming from California to the locales, from what I read and hear. When these additional funds arrive, obviously, they are dispersed. Does the library always get their fair share of those excess funds?
Sure, that is, that is a great question. So sort of a two-part answer. When the American Recovery Plan, which is the most recent large package passed at a federal level, so under the Obama administration, we had the, the, the ARA, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, where cities got money through existing programs. So under the Biden administration, we have ARPA, just to further confuse the issue, and ARPA will provide the city of Glendora with approximately seven, a little over seven and a half million dollars. We expect our first tranche of that funding, it'll come in two equal payments, about three and three-quarter million dollars to come in sometime in May. The Treasury Department issued its tentative guidelines on what the funding could be used for, and it is 151 pages long. So we are currently going through the 151 pages to determine what the funding could be used for. The funding cannot be used to pay down pension obligations, but can be used for backfilling lost revenue. And there is a really long mathematical calculation, like that long, onto how you can adhere yourself to lost revenue. There's also some capital and infrastructure-related opportunities, and then the ability to look at capital facility or capital improvements, not just a blanket capital improvement, but improvements that further the city's ability to weather future pandemics of sorts. So once we go through all the required and allowable funding, and it may surprise no one that about every city department is currently sitting on some sort of meeting to decide what is an eligible expenditure, because in true fashion, the federal government does not list specific programs, but rather hypothetical what-ifs. So that will be an ongoing conversation, how we help the business community as well. Can we offset rent? How do we help the community through homeowners and renters as well? And then how do we look at providing some additional one-time funding for city resources? So that, that conversation is still to come, and it'll be a pretty robust conversation, and it'll happen over the next one to 18 months as funding comes in and we evaluate the program's success. In addition to that funding, the federal government, and part of this is so much money was issued to the various, the various groups, comes to the state and county. The state and the county may allocate funding down. It could come through libraries, it could come through another avenue, and that we do not know yet. We do know the state's gonna create funding opportunities for our community as it relates to past due mortgage for people who are in a forbearance situation. We do understand that from a library perspective, there may be funding at a state level, but we don't have specifics at this time. But rest assured, where we find an eligible use for the funding, we'll definitely take a look at all departments to ensure that that money is being spread as far as we can. I will tell you, from an administration standpoint, our goal will be to get the money out and put into place as fast as possible for one-time-only programs. This isn't a reoccurring funding source every year, but over a two-year period. So we can establish a new program, but we, we absolutely can try to put that money to use as quickly as possible to benefit the community.
Just didn't want the library to be, to miss the opportunities that seem to be coming, probably.
I think Roger said it best earlier. We have a Friends Foundation that's pretty involved here, and I think they're gonna advocate in addition to everyone on this call for their fair share of funding as well.
Great. Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? Have all questions been?
Madam President, I just have, I wanted to say, I looked up, Adam was curious about the number of chairs in the Bidwell request. I did look it up. It's 225, so.
Thank you.
Let me report back.
Trustee Tolan, do you have something? Oh, I thought I saw your hand raised. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay. If not, I guess we need a motion to receive and file this report.
We'll move.
Thank you.
That was trustee two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a roll call vote. Trustee two?
Aye.
Trustee Merkley?
Aye.
Trustee Tolan?
Aye.
Vice President Gutierrez?
Aye.
And President Blum?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you, President Blum.
Thank you. That brings us to board and staff closing comments. Anyone have any closing comments this evening? Seeing no one, it's been
I do, I do, I do. Sorry, I was looking for my notes real quick.
Come on, Robin.
I know. Sorry. First, I just want, you know, I gave that correction for Cindy, but I just wanted to tell you, I really am excited about the Summer Discovery Challenge. It sounds like it is going to be such a good change. I, I'm thrilled, and I kept thinking of ideas how I can get my grandson involved. It's gonna be so fun. And then the Plaza Discovery Place, I went to it a couple of times and loved it. It was fun up there. I've been inside again, inside the main floor, and it, it just felt like I was coming home. It felt so good. So thank you. I've utilized all of the eBooks and audiobooks, but now to actually, I have a real book. I finished one, and I'm carrying around my real book. It's, it's great. So thank you to the staff for everything that you have done to keep us going, to keep us updated. I really do want you to know that I appreciate it so much.
Glad you got in, Robin. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, if there is no objection, this meeting will adjourn at 8:39. Thank you all.